Uh, meeting, uh, which I guess is a good introduction to here we go again. In some ways, it was as challenging as it was, it was easier last fall because all the rules were in place that we had to follow. We had no choice. This year, SUNY is into local control as much as possible and is leaving it up to each individual institution. To make most of the determinations regarding how we're going to operate for this, over this fall semester. As you know, we plan to be six sixty forty for this term, forty percent online and sixty percent on campus. We thought that was a little conservative, turned out we were appreciative and that was a good thing to do. We were always planning on masking in the classrooms and gathering places. Now, we'll be right now anyway, masking everywhere in county buildings as we are this evening. So we didn't have to change, we didn't have to change that one. Some places were going to ask only the unvaccinated to be masked, but that's very hard to track right now in this environment. Unvaccinated will have to be tested every week. Well, that is a requirement to be tested every week if you are unvaccinated. Students will be required, will be given thirty five days once a vaccine has achieved standard authorization. Versus the emergency authorization vaccines have now. Students will be given thirty five days to get vaccinated with that regularly authorized vaccine. Or they won't be allowed on SUNY campuses. That's one of the hard rules that will go into place once we have a vaccine that has standard authorization. Most, uh, also the rest is up to us and they have given us guidance, not, not requirements. Uh, one of the things they've recommended, which we're doing is that we require resident students to show proof of vaccination. And we are doing that. Other thing that they have recommended, uh, is that we require athletes, those playing on our athletic teams. To show proof of vaccination, we are doing that. I believe every SUNY institution is both in both cases because students have a choice there. They don't have to live on campus, they don't have to play a sport, but we can't stop them from getting a higher education. Uh, even if they don't decide not to get vaccinated, they can study online if, if it up at the wrong time in the semester, they can find the classes. So if someone just simply does not, will not get vaccinated, it's best they sign up for all online classes. So there it has to leave campus at some point when you have a regularly authorized vaccine. We know that fifty six percent of our faculty and staff are vaccinated, or well, we know for sure that fifty six percent of our faculty and staff are vaccinated. I hope I know it would be higher than that. Now, also recall those forty percent of classes that are online, many of our faculty will be teaching from home. They won't be regularly on campus. If you're not coming to campus, then you're not required to, we're not expecting you to be vaccinated if you, if you don't wish to be. But in, after all, we are a higher education institution and we believe in science and social science. And the science and social science is overwhelming in favor of overwhelming, beyond overwhelming in favor of getting the vaccine. So, uh, we hope that everyone involved in our industry on principle that we support science and social sciences. A major principles of what we do with, with getting vaccinated. While right now we're required to wear masks, uh, in all county buildings, the SUNY doctors from upstate and downstate. Have said it's safe enough for vaccinated faculty to teach with, they had to lecture for hours on end with a mask on. That it's okay for faculty as long as they keep their six foot distance or more to lecture without a mask. Have to see the, with the county restrictions, whether that's even allowable. But the doctors said because they, it's also, you're to lecture for hours on end with a mask on has its own. Potential, potential impact, uh, including on the, the teaching and learning that's, that's going on of people being able to understand what's being said. So that's another, another hurdle we're going to have to, uh, we're going to have to get over. I think I've covered all the high points for, um. For the, for COVID at this point, we will test everyone in the first week of school. Uh, SUNY recommends that we test everyone to get a baseline. And then after that, if you are not vaccinated, the requirement is to be tested once a week. So we'll be back to doing what we were, what we were doing this semester. Thank. After that, I think I've covered all the, the high points for, for COVID for the. Well, the biggest pushback we're getting now, of course, is stressing students to please get vaccinated. Some just, some just don't want to do it. And, uh, they, they couldn't get an interrupted education if we all of a sudden get a, uh. Timing, who knows how bad the timing is to be standard authorization comes from one of the vaccines, but. Up across that bridge would we come to? Enrollment's doing a little better than projected. It's, it's, it's good news, it's still not great, but it's better than projected at the moment. And so we're, we're just a little better than the, uh, than the targeted, targeted budget. So that, that's good news, at least for this week, we'll see how it goes this weekend next. Hope that, that holds up. We've been around the same number for a while, dipped down a little bit last few weeks, but now it's, it's dipped back up. We're very happy about that. Uh, Anthony, Barbara and myself met with the county leadership recently. Given the budget situation and enrollment, the county was asking appropriately, so what's our sustainability plan for the future? Michael will go over that with you here this evening. You have the, uh, an outline of sustainability plan, sustainability plan right in front of you that we, uh, that we've shared with the county. You've got, thanks to generosity, the last two administrations in the Congress. Uh, all of higher education, you know, had some, some pretty healthy, uh, some pretty healthy stimulus. And community colleges fair, fair quite well in that process. So we've got a couple of years to figure out what we're going to be in a couple of years. Given the, the demographic challenges in this region and across the country. We can't rely on the, uh, nor can any community college really in the nation, although it helps if you have a growing demographic in the south of the west. Um, the level of tuition and, and tuition based subsidy that we have in the past. So, uh, we've got to figure out over the next year or so, and then begin to implement things, uh, next week. To help us be leaner and meaner and to attract more of a shrinking pool of traditional students. And a challenging pool of adult students because the job market is so hot, people can work if they want to work. You all probably know that over the generations, community colleges and enrollment, as it did during the great recession, tends to spike upward. During recessions and tends to go down during, uh, hot economic times like we're, like we're in right now. And of course, that's happening all, all across the country and it's kind of the reverse for senior institutions. They tend to do, uh, better in good times, uh, when mom and dad's savings portfolio is, is doing better. And, uh, and not so, not so well in, uh, in bad times when mom and dad's investment portfolio isn't, isn't doing so well. And it's just the reverse for, for community colleges. So we've, we've got challenges on, on both fronts and, and we've got to figure out strategically how we're going to do business differently. When we get to the other end of the one time stimulus money, which we appreciate, appreciate very much. We've got the team and the, and the folks to do it. We'll see whether the culture has the will to do it. Part of our job and leadership to help get us to the will, uh, do it, uh, to become a, a different community college. And a new post-COVID, um, ongoing birth, death world. I encourage your sons and daughters to have more babies. That's, that's the only real way out of this, but it'll be eighteen years, uh, before that helps community college. Uh, at this point, we've got a new dean who's joined us. I think most of you know Mike Kenny, who was always here with us, the Maestro. So our new dean of liberal arts and business has, uh, has joined us. I'm going to ask Penny, uh, to introduce Jeffrey for us.
Sure, Dr. Jeffrey Anderson, A B P and Dean of Business and Professional Studies and Liberal Arts. Jeffrey started with us on July first and has absolutely hit the ground running, very busy time and has. Taking it over and taking it on. So looking forward to great things, he'll be meeting all of the faculty obviously next weekend. Before we do that.
Glad to be here and meet you all. Welcome, Jeffrey. And that concludes our report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Drum. Go back to item number one, approval of minutes. They have a motion to approve the June seventeenth, two thousand twenty one, quarter speed meeting minutes. So move by Jim. By Barb, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, so carried. Item two point zero, the FNF meeting of August seventeenth, Kathy.
Hi, good evening, um, you have the, uh, minutes before you, we had a good meeting. All the recommended actions were approved, uh, were, are being recommended by FNF. And, um, we also had a very good budget report. Michael went through a lot of detail with us, um, around, um, both all of the actions that are being taken, um, by the, um, college. Senior team around, um, enrollment and increasing enrollment across multiple programs at the college. And then also walking us through, um, the rolling, I'm going to call it a rolling forecast. Because that's how it, it makes most sense to me, but how the budget, um, the projected budget. And then where we think we'll end up over the next couple of years and what kind of, um, uh, state funding. We need to have over the next, uh, two to three years in order to get to a balanced budget. So I think, uh, Michael will have more conversation about that today, but otherwise, uh, I, we would submit the minutes, um, as presented. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Item three point zero, Kathy recommends that all the preferred agenda items be moved. So I have a motion to move items three point one through three point eleven. Tina, second by Jim, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, so carried. Action item four point zero, recommend approval to set the day and time of the annual meeting.
We have that in the.
September sixteenth.
Right, and we have, uh, everybody at that meeting. I will.
As far as I know.
Okay. All right, well then, I have a motion to move that. Barb, second by Tina, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, so carried. Recommend approval of new I T nine thousand two web accessibility policy. I have a motion. Michael, second. Jim, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, so carried. Item four point three, recommend approval of new A A four zero zero four ethical recruitment of student policy. A motion, Michael, second, Barb, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, so carried. Going back to item five point zero, and their information of Dr. Ross, can you give us an update on the student affairs?
Um, within your report, you'll find information about the diversity of the community from a full time employee perspective and student perspective. The data that I received comes from HR and institutional research, uh, respectively. HR generally takes a snapshot and does longitudinal information, um, with regards to students and highlights their first time. Highlights our first time full time, um, enrollment with the students. This is important because when you understand the trends and where efforts should be made to improve student success. It's critical for the sustainability of, of our college. On average, we do a pretty good job of retaining our students from fall to spring. Our, our cohort is a little over seventy five percent retained. Asians obviously, well, I'm not going to say obviously, I'm sorry about that. Asians do bear the best, um, with black students, not black students doing the worst on average for first time full time students. Going from fall to spring. But, and, but when you look at the cohort, the average cohort of first time full time students from fall to fall. It's a little more challenging because we're less than fifty percent, um, at forty six percent for that average cohort. Asians are still retained at the highest rate, however, black and Latinx students only persist at thirty six percent. Latinx students persisted thirty percent and white students persisted fifty percent. So within the report, you'll see the trend data over the past ten years for first time full time students. But we are making great strides in trying to increase the retention rates and help students persist. Not only from term to term, but to graduation. Addressing the variables that impact their smooth transition to the environment. Includes making sure that all students have the records and paperwork done because that's the, one of the biggest challenges. To getting them in the door. They've been advised, they, we work with to make sure that they're registered, have books on the first day of class. Um, the other day I met with a group of ELP students and I asked them to share their concerns with me about attending room. And the ELP students generally reflect, um, their, their low income, students of color. Some of them come from, from rural areas, um, but they, they're in a program that is designed to intentionally and strategically. Put work efforts to make sure that they, they succeed. And one of the biggest, couple of the, the trending topics that, that they have are, are making sure that. Students are afraid to fail and I know all students are afraid to fail, but this group of students was really, really, um, afraid to fail. Surprisingly enough, only one student of that cohort mentioned money. And I liken it to the fact that with ELP, there are, um, you get quite a bit of grant money above and beyond what you receive. By the, from federal money and for from state money, you get financial, good financial support from ELP. But also they're concerned about making the transition to the environment and, and making, and, and making friends. And one of the things in my experiences that I found, students of color, that their social engagement. And I'm not talking about the partying and that sort of thing that comes later. But the social engagement is very, very important, um, for students of color. So making sure that they feel comfortable in an environment. They, um, know where they're going, um, with regards to the facilities. They are at ease, um, you know, with their peers as they settle in is very, very important. Also very important for students of color to be in an environment that is reflective of who they are. And, and one of the things I, I'm going to make a concerted effort this year to also pay attention to. Is that the fact that diversity isn't always very visible. Even though we, um, know that L G B T Q I students, um, some of them are also at risk. A lot of attention is not given to that cohort of students and that's something that we need to pay attention to. But it's, it's more difficult to see because it's something that is where a student has to self identify. We don't do surveys, um, to ask students if, um, if they're L G B T Q I. Or not, you can generally tell, um, a black, Latinx, Asian, A A P I, uh, students. So I think it's going to be very, very important that, you know, we, we work to pay attention to all of those cohorts of students. But in addition to, um, trying to ensure that we retain our students, not only do we have the ELP program. That does the intrusive intervention, we have the counseling program, um, that does the emotional and mental support. But one of the things that I believe we need to, and we're working on as an institution. Is making sure that our environment comes more closely to, um, for the students to matching the employees that we have here. And in spring of twenty, our full time, um, uh, demographic profile of our employees. Was two percent Asian with four percent Asian students. Black students were two percent with eleven percent white, um. Black faculty and staff, one percent Latinx, eight percent, um, black faculty and staff. Sixty four percent white students versus ninety three percent, um, white faculty and staff. And knowing that, um, students of color are more comfortable in an environment that reflects who they are. Efforts need to be made for us, with us to enhance the employee demographic profile of, of the institution. And we know that minoritized employees often play a role beyond, uh, their position destruction. Because we need for them to serve as mentors and on committees and be more visible. Because of the impact that they not only have on U R M students, but on the community as a whole. One of the things that, um, I'm doing with, um, academic affairs is the prodigy program. Um, and the prodigy program is a SUNY initiative designed to enhance the number of, um, faculty of color and women in STEM. We already have, um, two prodigy, um, faculty, one, both of them are in STEM. One is a woman of color and I, and her, um, picture is, is in my, my report. But the other thing that we're doing is, um, launching a faculty fellows program. Because it's so important to be able to create a pipeline. So we're going to reach out to BU will be our, the first institution that we reach out to. For their U R M graduate students to come and serve as adjunct faculty members. To get exposure to teaching and, and serving in the community college, which we hope will increase our, um, faculty applicant pool. The other thing, um, that you will find in the report is where we recruit, um, for faculty and staff. And we'll work on, um, I'll work on this year trying to identify more strategic places to be able to outreach. For, for faculty and staff. One of the ways that the Division of Student Affairs has worked to try to ensure that there are, um, more minorities on campus. For students in the student affairs areas, we've worked with BU, um, and have graduate students. Because there are quite a few U R M graduate students in the, um, student affairs program and in the counseling program. So they come and they assist our, our departments in working with our students. And the hope is that as we turn over those students, we already know how their work ethic and, and how they are. They understand the community college, they understand, um, working with community college students. And we hope that through, through that relationship and, and hopefully we'll be able to expand. We will increase our pool and thereby increasing the diversity in the community. And that is my point there.
Thank you, Dr. Ross, any questions for Dr. Ross? I have one question on page thirteen, where it said the ELP student stats from the fall of two thousand twenty to the spring of two thousand twenty one. It's really, um, it mirrors the image from the twenty to twenty one. But I guess my one question to you is from the average attempted credits to the average earned. It seems like in both semesters, they're dropping two out of four classes. What is that attributed to?
Since for this past year, um, COVID and online took our students out. Particularly the ELP students and, and quite a few of the U R M students. Vanessa and Josh do yeoman's work in trying to intervene and keep them in. But the online.
Did it much more difficult, yeah. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Dr. Ross?
Can I also share, I'm sorry.
Sure.
That, um, we have a full bright scholar. Okay, we have a full bright scholar, um, that is on campus for the next academic year. He's from Chile, um, he just arrived Tuesday evening. He is with us in partnership with Binghamton University. His specialty is human rights. And he will be teaching in the liberal arts department. So we're hoping to do some lunch and learns and some other kinds of, um, engagements with him. Having a full bright, um, in the community college is, is a big thing. So I'm excited about it. And so hopefully, um, you will get some.
So Jesse will be writing something that will.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Student Assembly update, Mr. Woodward.
Thank you. Student Assembly is very excited to welcome two graduate interns from Binghamton University this fall. One of the interns will be co advising student assembly and will work closely with our student leaders. Our other interns will be co, co advising the activities committee with the S A, Vice President of Student Affairs. Working closely with clubs on campus and will be focusing on student engagement. Election updates, we have two students returning to student assembly, myself and, and another senator. We will start holding, um, tabling events to recruit new students starting at the end of this month and next month.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Michael? A five point four, E C C Foundation report, Miss Williams.
Hi, my report is in the packet and I'll just discuss a few highlights. Our fiscal year ended on June thirty, twenty twenty one. And, uh, we had a very good year despite a difficult pandemic, primarily due to a robust, um, financial market. Unrealized gains that we saw to our portfolio. We have a record, yeah. Total, total assets, forty seven point million dollars, including vast interest in perpetual trust. And this compares to a year end, June thirty, twenty twenty, of assets of thirty eight point eight million. So, um, as of June thirty, twenty twenty one, the foundation had a total net gain of nine million, four hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. Directly related to seven point six seven million dollar increase in unrealized gains on our endowment. And one point two million dollar realized. Nice, um, story behind that is that, um, we have the realized gains. That pretty much covered the majority of our scholarships, so free and clear money. Really interesting year for us. We also raised four hundred thousand more dollars in the previous fiscal year than we did the year prior. Which we did not anticipate. It's not skewed by any estate gifts, in fact, we did not have any estate gifts that settled in the past fiscal year. So that we got some larger gifts. Uh, we have less donors, the average gift is higher. So I think, uh, we're all spared and certainly had and prepared our budget. Heading into the COVID pandemic, we had no idea that we would have such a successful year. I think primarily, um, nearly a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of that money came in as a result of the student emergency fund campaign that we ran. And one of the things we found is that people stepped up extremely generous to help assist our students. Facing financial emergencies and needing, um, helping help to pay the rapid utility billings that normally we wouldn't be funding. But we were able to, um, raise a significant amount of money, which qualified us for a match from the SUNY Impact Association. And we did award a hundred and eighty three thousand dollars in emergency funds last fall. We don't anticipate that we will be funding as many emergencies this coming year, um, due to some of the stressors and COVID. Some of the student asking money that students were able to receive. So, uh, I think overall financially for us, it really was a very good year. And we also funded a record number of scholarships and, uh, support to the campus and the programs this past year. So all around just being really very fortunate. Just a, another few highlights, we have a, um, a series of virtual alumni, um, presentations. Where we conducted them through SUNY and we connected with a number of people. And I'll tell you, equivalent to the number of people that. And I'll tell you, it's equivalent to the number of people that we had at our last in-person alumni meeting on campus. And for weeks of presentations, our faculty helped us out. We had a number of different topics that we discussed. And I just found out today that as a result of one of those presentations that we did, we had one of the first female engineers to enter the program here at Binghamton Day. She's eighteen years old. Just we had a connection with her as a result of that virtual alumni event that we held when it happened to Dr. Lockhouse, where Robert Lockhouse was doing the presentation on STEM and engineering in particular. And she attended that event. And so she shared with us her cap and her history, sent us a huge photo album of all kinds of wonderful things that we're looking forward to sharing during our seventy-fifth anniversary. But also that she informed us today that she has made a planned gift in her will. And we had not really gotten, didn't know that much about her, hadn't had she would make an investment in gifts, but now we know of her planned gift intention. I think it's just an amazing continued connection regardless of the fact that this was a very dark year for a lot of people. And so I call that just a number one success. Our staff is working with the Campus Committee on the Seventy-Fifth Anniversary, so we're excited about hanging out when we come in here. So stay tuned for that. We are, have just finished our audit field work for fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit. And another thing was we got a recent alumni stock gift posted out of fiscal year, the very last day, out of a hundred thousand dollars. Yeah. This stock gift was not given to us to develop a student scholarship, which most of our five and six figure gifts are to endow scholarship. But it's to endow a fund which will help our faculty get training and development, faculty development through assistance to work with students who have special needs. Also will help support training for students who are pursuing field work and careers where they would be working with students with special needs. And it's a significant gift from this family. It was a couple that met here, married, had a child, decided that they wanted to give that. And they let us know that Broom changed their lives and they wanted to be part of helping to give that. So I think it's just a really nice story. And I did want to let you know that we are expecting an initial distribution of a seven-figure estate gift from an alumnus from the class of nineteen fifty-five. And we anticipate we're going to be getting the initial payment in the next month. I'm sure you'll be hearing more about it when we talk about it at a number of meetings. And it was something that we've known about for a little while. So again, someone who did very well in their life. And Broom was a very big part of their life and they made a significant investment. Questions?
Thank you. Absolutely. Great job by you and your team.
Thanks.
Hello, Mr. Legakis.
Anthony, you should have my report in your packet. Brief. Right now, our focus is on preparing the campus for for the reopening for the start of fall semester. Couple of weeks. Part of that, as I said from the other day, if you have that meeting, we're finishing up the installation of the bio-routingization units in all of our buildings, which will remove contaminants from the air to keep us COVID safe. We've started work on the second patio adjacent to the library. And we also anticipate, as you know, we've talked about this in the past, of constructing four pavilions across campus. Concrete work for two of those will start on Monday. The concrete work for the other two will be part of the campus paving project that we recently received bids for. And you can see, we've got three major projects that will be ongoing shortly. That's the replacement of the library roof and the penthouse renovation. We're saving a number of the campus parking lots, including replacement and addition of sidewalk in critical areas on campus. Also handicapped accessibility improvements. And also the installation of pedestrian flashing beacons on our outer loop road at a number of locations to better warn and advise drivers that we have a lot of pedestrian crossing that road because of parking. We also received bids to tint the windows in both the old science building and the services building. And we will be tainting smaller portions of other buildings as well in certain critical areas. I spoke to the fire dampener access project. That project has been completed. We're finally receiving the standby generator tomorrow will be delivered to campus. It's been a long time coming and that'll be installed to support the IT server in the business building. In addition to that, what I did not put on here because it took so long, we had a project last fall to replace the transformer at the AP building that finally arrived and was installed within the last, the last month. And then I listed a few projects that our SUNY Broom staff has completed. We constructed two counseling offices in the old science building, did repair floors and benches and the players benches in the medical room, my center. We also installed a hard floor in the health services exam room, all done by our by our staff. And lastly, we continue to value the installation of fencing at certain locations across campus, Dr. Broom, Mike, and I identified another location based on. So that is my report. I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
And the fencing issue, that plays a big role in how a campus looks when you start designing your fencing and also is prominent vandalism. Are you guys taking that into consideration?
I think what we can do, Anthony, I think we can hopefully prevent that by by providing some type of landscaping in front of the fence to minimize that so that it doesn't allow that to happen. You know, I'm not going to say it's not going to happen, but I think we could take some measures to.
It just may be a significant means, I'm going for. And it doesn't buy us much, just a thought.
Understood. But but whatever the material is that we finally decide upon, we'll make sure that it's as low made as possible. As I said, we'll try to structure it so that it minimizes any opportunities for, as I said, balance.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great, thanks. Thank you, David. Michael, five, six, five, seven, five, eight. Standard information. Five, nine, Human Resource update, Mr. Gordon.
Good evening. The personnel report reflects activity during the months of June and July as shared for information purposes.
Questions? Thank you, Lynn. Budget and finance update, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. So in your packet is the monthly budget forecast through the end of July, which is eleven months of our twelve-month fiscal year, which ends in about ten days, August thirty-first. We significantly updated this forecast to reflect a balanced budget with the caveat that we will utilize approximately three million dollars of HERF two federal stimulus money. Based on stimulus money, one of the major categories of eligibility is lost revenue. And the variance of revenue to budget was a negative variance of about five million dollars, predominantly due to declining enrollment, but also reductions on the state and county side. So based on that eligibility, currently, we're estimating that will be approximately three million of stimulus money to ensure a balanced budget for the current fiscal year. I think the college did very well in trying to reduce the costs to offset this five million dollar negative variance to the budget. Approximately two point eight million of cost reductions were done net of a five percent increase in the in the health insurance premium increase. So in effect, needed a couple of million dollars to to get to get the budget balanced. This number is pretty consistent to what we have in the budget that's starting in about ten days. A similar amount of about three million is what it's been budgeted for federal stimulus money for for next year's budget. So that's the update. So I can assure the board that we will have a balanced budget because even if some of these numbers get a little bit worse, if you have available stimulus money to offset any any further changes, likewise, it might improve. Some of these numbers may improve slightly, which would result in needing less than the three million dollars that we're forecasting. But I would say these are reasonably strong numbers at this point in the in the fiscal year. Anybody have any any questions or comments related to that? Okay, so at when the budget was approved back in June, the college decided to, really needed to develop a multi-year sustainability plan in light of two major factors, one being an ongoing decline in in enrollment. That's occurred at least here in Broom for the last four or five years, fairly modest, up through a couple of percent a year, up through eighteen, nineteen. And then with COVID, as you can see in the monthly update, you know, the college just this year compared to last year's actual down more than sixteen percent in FTE, student FTEs. So between kind of a steady decline in in enrollment, both in this region and New York State nationally for the most part, combined with the devastating impacts of COVID predominantly on the population that community colleges serve, as Dr. Drum alluded to, really needed to take a really, really hard look at how did, how did we need to position the college prospectively, given minimally those two major dynamics that aren't going to go away soon. Meanwhile, the college is at least over the last several years has done a multi-year forecast of of both expense and revenue, just to get a longer term view as to what kind of challenges or opportunities existed in in what I would call a fairly short-term horizon, three to five years. This is something that middle states acknowledged that we did and as part of their collegial advice, recommended especially in light of COVID, that the college continued to update that multi-year forecast on a regular basis. So in your, next to you, it's it's electronic, but also provided you a hard copy. There's a three-page legal-sized document. And I'm not going to go into a lot of detail because I think most of it is self-explanatory. And I would like to acknowledge Dr. Ains and her academic division, especially for the first page, which predominantly the academic division will will thrive and has driven. These are many of which, as you review them, are not new to the college. But either are shifting its focus, expanding its focus, reinventing itself. Most of these you're very familiar with. The way this document is set up is there's basically two parts to this, to the sustainability plan initiative. The three, the first three columns on page one represent what we would call enrollment or revenue growth. This includes both new enrollment, new students, but more particularly retention of existing students, which there's a lot of opportunity to try to ensure that students who enroll in the fall continue in the spring or from year to year, continue to attend the college. So the first three columns are primarily driving enrollment and revenue. And we've been, we've selected really the top ten major initiatives. And this will highly be integrated with several other plans that the college regularly develops, inclusive of of an IT plan, multi-year plan, a capital facilities, multi-year plan, an academic master plan, a strategic plan, and a distance learning plan. And I'm sure there's others, but those are at least a handful critical ones that all interrelate with the financial sustainability plan. So first three columns really identifies key areas that the college is going to focus. Significant amount of attention. We know many of these also are of great need by the community. And given our community college, we certainly pay a lot of attention in terms of community need, especially in light of the fact that the state and county are supporting the community college. So a ballpark estimate around FTE growth is approximately two hundred and twenty-five FTEs, which is, which is a little a little less than ten percent. And with every FTE being equal to about eleven thousand dollars, that kind of gets us to a nice round number of about two point five million. Additionally, the last column on page one talks about college attempting to be, continue to be efficient. We've given you rankings in the past that shows the college compared to its twenty-nine other community college peers in New York State. Highly efficient in administrative costs and and other areas. It's highly invested in both the instructional and academic support areas. So there's a number of initiatives here to continue optimizing the course schedule, being more efficient around energy and continuing to take a very close look at any turnover that occurs and either contemplate restructuring or whether whether the position needs to be filled, especially in light of declining student involvement, both physically and with FTEs and with distance learning still being a major component of instructional presentation. So it just gives you at a very high level, both on the revenue side and on the expense side. The major initiatives that we're continuing to pursue. We have a number of project management software that the college utilizes predominantly under institutional effectiveness, which also reports to Dr. Ains and we're going to try to integrate this information, each of these projects among many others. We have annual goals and annual assessments that are done. Be a lot of metrics behind a lot of this. And we would anticipate that key leaders in the academic division will come before the board that key leaders in the academic division will come before the board with one or two maybe each meeting to just give you an update as to the progress that we're making results that we're seeing, certainly on the cost reduction initiatives. I'll assume major responsibility to to speak to that with monthly financial forecast, among other other documents. Just if you flip to page two, one of the primary drivers in the revenue estimates, which are on page three, is high school graduation rates. It's categorized here in three major cohorts statewide, then kind of southern tier counties contiguous with Broom, and then we isolate. Broom is about, Broom County is about 55, 56% of the students that attend community college. So certainly that there's a high cause and effect, probably high correlation as well between what those graduate numbers look like and what our enrollment numbers look like. So SUNY provides this information across all all 64 of its institutions, has it back a long, long time. I've just provided in this document, just to give you some idea of kind of four years of actual history, some of the dynamics we dealt with over the past four years. And then the middle, the middle columns is basically the numbers that we're using to incorporate the financial projections, most particularly draw your attention to the columns at the top that are labeled 20, 22, 23, 23, 24, and 24, 25. If you look at those three columns and look at the very last three rows, if you own in on Broom, Broom County and look at the very last row, you'll see that what's projected after the current year's budget that's coming on board in 10 days, that after that, the following year is projected that will have a 7.2% decline in 22, 23. We'll have an uptick next year, next June, go up about 3%. And the following year goes down 7%. So it's kind of the last big cliff that we're going to have to deal with in addition to the one we just dealt with. If you look at 2021, you'll see in that Broom cohort at the bottom, 8.9%. So that's what we've been talking about, is that 9% decline that we've been facing this year. So unfortunately, two years from now, we have kind of a pretty close to a similar type of drop. In between those, that year, we have a 3% projected growth in graduates, and then in 23, 24, a 3% growth. So those two threes, three and a halves, kind of mitigate the 7% drop. So but when you go to the last page, what we're using as assumptions, you go to the very first row that has assumption and comment narrative, you'll see that our net FTEs for the budget the budget that's coming up in 10 days, we're proposing that we think that's going to be about a 16, 16, almost 17% decline. To Drum indicated, we're doing slightly better than budget and forecast. But that's the number we have factored in there. And then you'll see the next three numbers, 1% growth, 7% decline, 2% growth, pretty comparable to the high school graduation rates that I just identified from Broom County. So the way we just build this model, again, you can read the the assumptions and comments for both revenue side and the expense side. Again, we factored a tuition increase. We had no tuition increase or no student fee increases in the or the budget that is coming in 10 days, predominantly because of COVID, the economic chaos to most of our students. But prospectively, we're utilizing about a 3.85% average based on that's been the average five years prior to the no increase this year. Factoring that the state will continue to either provide a $50 increase, if you're lucky enough that your FTEs grow, or the current formula, which is 98% of your prior, prior year state aid amount, which is most likely the scenario that the college will experience. We're just estimating a 1% increase by the county, which again, prior to, prior to this past year was the average for the last four or five years. Then on the expense side, we're factoring a 2.5% adjustment on the payroll side, benefits are 47% of that number. Just giving our aging infrastructure, we're projecting a 5% increase per year for capital renovations and repairs, in addition to the capital improvement plan that we submit to the county every year, and a 2% increase annually for for the contractual category, which is everything other than payroll, supplies, travel, utilities, materials, everything else. So if you then look at the second to the last row, it says HERF-1, 2, and 3 funding. So you go to the very first fiscal year, which was 2019, 20 actual. The college utilized for HERF-1, which was also called CARES Act, about 2.14 million. And that was primarily to offset the $2 million loss of revenue against the budget, almost dollar for dollar. So we use federal stimulus money, last year's actual. As I mentioned in the monthly forecast, we're projecting needing about $3 million for the current fiscal year that ends August 31st. The board approved for the next column, 21, 22 budget, the board approved utilizing again about $3 million of stimulus money for next year's budget. And then in the forecast, the forecast of three years, we're projecting in the first two years of the projection, fiscal year 22, 23, about $2 million, and 23, 24, about $2 million. And then that we'd be balanced three years out. Just as a couple of other pieces of information, if you add up those federal stimulus amounts, it totals approximately $12 million. There are two categories of federal stimulus funds. One category is stimulus money that goes directly to students. That was about $12 million for the three HERF funding streams. On the institutional side, which you can also use for students, but predominantly you're using it for the college, both the college and its affiliates. The total amount that the college received was 16.8 million. So when you add up all the years that I just referred to, we're utilizing about 12.1 of the 16.8 million, which leaves about 4.7 million. And that 4.7 million will either be used if used more of balance of 4.7 million if our estimates are off. And/or there will be a need for the affiliates, housing, and the faculty-student association to cover lost revenues within room and board, bookstore, dining, and childcare. So as we conclude with their financial statements, which are June 30 fiscal year, there will be some need to provide some of the federal stimulus money to the affiliates for revenue that they lost, especially when the facilities were closed. But even without them closed, we're still experiencing vacancies and revenue losses within those operations. So we will need to set aside some funding for those purposes. In addition, SUNY has required all of its institutions to spend some of the stimulus money for certain initiatives that they've identified. So for example, under HERF-3, they've indicated that we have to use at least 5% of our stimulus money towards mental health services. As just one example, we're being required to provide testing on a weekly basis. That number will reach at least a half a million dollars based on $50 per test. So there will be other unanticipated expenses that are not in the budget that will be eligible under under stimulus funding. So I just wanted to provide at a fairly high level some assurances and some sense that the college is attempting to prudently, strategically address the financial dynamics that it's facing. And we've generally articulated to this board that in our recommendation to the board that the stimulus money, which again, one of its primary focuses was loss of revenue, that it buys us time over the next couple of years to transition all of the initiatives and more on page one to reposition the college to increase and stabilize its revenue side of the equation and continue our efforts as the college may get a little bit smaller each year to also ensure that we're being as efficient as possible in terms of the cost side of the equation. And with that, I'll respond to any questions or any comments that you have.
No questions. I just also want to do a shout out to four trustees who are involved in the sustainability plan here. Jason Andrews is the superintendent. He's working with the college on the fast forward. Item number four, it's been integral in moving that forward. Trustee Connerton has been very integral in getting the hospitals on board to work with the college on item number six, which has to do with the health sciences. And trustee Fiala and trustee Coffey, who were former county executive and former legislator, both are involved with working with the county because the county's support of the college is very integral and they're co-chairing a committee to work closer with the county. So I'd like to thank the four of you for your efforts at what you've done today and what you're going to continue to go on forward. Thank you.
Anthony, just one other note on that. I think on a go-forward basis, we discussed at FNF that Dr. Ains would, from time to time at our board and trustees meeting, go over those initiatives. Not all of them all the time, but on a sort of on a rolling go forward, we'll hear about them and particularly around best practices that are working or things that are not are not terribly effective and how we're going to change that up as it relates to enrollment. So I think it will give all of us a better understanding of what's happening in those major programs and certainly give us the ability to have talking points out in the community.
Thank you. 5.11 candidates for professional recognition increment, Dr. Penny Ains.
The report reflects indirectly.
Thank you. 5.12 student housing report, Dr. Ross.
Standard report. There are 82 monthly bond payments that have been made through August 10th. The student village move-in is August 28th. And we have some students that are currently residing in housing as part of the EOP program and are student athletes.
Any questions for Dr. Ross? Thank you. 5.13 media report, Jesse.
All links are included in your file.
Any other new business to come before the board? And motion to adjourn? Fiala?
Second.
Thank you. Everybody have a great week.
Thank you.